The greatest best year ever.
Last I ever got my homework in.
And never again.
And then, then never again.
[Laughter]
I'll sit, my friend. Right, everybody?
Yes.
I will call the meeting to order. I'll ask if you to stand if you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone have anything they wish to bring up that is not on tonight's agenda?
Seeing no one, I will move to discussion items. But before we start, I would like to first welcome the new superintendent to the table. And so, thank you, Carolyn, for coming.
Thank you very much.
And we look forward to many, many more years.
Thank you.
Before I get into reports from school committee members, I do want to mention a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to recognize Ms. Bowles, who's here from Middleborough's new paper, Nemasket Week, today, Nemasket Weekly. So, we appreciate a new newspaper in Middleborough, and we thank you for coming to our meeting. I also want to say our excitement for the Little League, even though they did lose the other day, it's still double elimination. So, the tournament continues, and we wish them well. I especially enjoyed the video from the administrators. So, thank you very much, everybody. And with that, I'll turn it over. Does anyone else have anything they wish to bring up? Teresa?
Just to piggyback off that, thanks to Boston Tavern for hosting us yesterday at the game. It was a great community event. And also Friday, Saturday night at seven, starting at six, but the game starts at seven, Fireside will be hosting another watch party. So, it's great for the community to get together. It was a really fun afternoon for a lot of people, a lot of kids. Kids were getting on the news, and they were excited. So, it was just a good energy. So, just wanted to let people know that they can go to Fireside at seven.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Mr. Chair. Right ahead, Ms. Row.
Mr. Chair, there's obviously some huge sporting events going on for the town of Middleborough right now, but I wanted to draw a little attention to another event that happened that was not strictly sports, but underwater robotics this past weekend down at the town pool. Fifteen Borough Bot students competed in a underwater robotics competition to, with the theme of water, waterway cleanup. So, they had to retrieve sunken and floating debris with robots that they actually made two years ago, right before COVID hit, and the whole thing got put on hold. And so, they had a great time. They, they did really well to the point where we're trying to figure out what we can use these things for now. But we obviously really appreciate the, the Little League stuff that's going on, but I want to draw a little attention to that as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one, Nathan Donahue could not be here tonight, but did ask me to mention a couple of things, and I will. He wanted to mention that the high school just finished Start Strong, and it was a huge success, and there was a great turnout, and it was great to see all the freshmen be there, involved, and have a good time. And he wanted to remind everybody that several Middleborough school sports start tomorrow, and then the rest on, on Monday, I believe football and golf start tomorrow, and then the rest start on Monday. So, all the fall sports, it's that time of year. And with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent's report. Welcome again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Tonight, what we'll start with is the first item, which is the Middleborough High School Student Handbook Proposed Changes. Paul Branigan and Mr. Andrew Dizel are here to talk about those changes. I'll invite them to the microphone now.
Please. Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Lyons, congratulations on your position, and thank you for having us this evening. First of all, let's go twelves, okay? And also, let's go Borough Bot. That's amazing. And wish the Dizels luck, because we're packing up the car and headed to Williamsport this weekend to go support the boys in the town for their Saturday and hopefully again on Sunday night games. So, we have some modest changes that we'd like to propose for our MHS student handbook. The first being minor grammar and syntax edits. The second being updates of all dates and personnel changes for the 2022-2023 school year. The third update is an update in the, in DESI's competency determination or CD information to reflect general changes with our next-gen MCAS, as well as an acknowledgement of the interim changes throughout 2025 due to COVID. The fourth proposed change we have is an adjustment in our cellphone policy, so it can be more comprehensive. And we added consequences for photographing, video recording, or audio recording students or staff at MHS without their permission or knowledge. The fifth proposed change that we have tonight is added the necessity of a color-coded pass in addition to our e-hall pass system. And the last proposed change we have tonight is to address our tardy issue, which, after analyzing the data, was clearly an area for growth for our school. We tried to be more proactive and engaging with the student body to not just have a consequence at the end of the quarter or end of the term with loss of credit, but we wanted to have more engagement and interaction with them, with home, and before things got to the point where they were losing credit due to absenteeism or tardiness. So, at this point, if anyone would like to ask any questions or have any concerns about any of the proposed edits, I'd be happy to answer them.
Andy, can you talk a little about when you make changes to the handbook, who you talk to and how you come about these changes?
So, so typically, we take a look at certain data points such, such as our attendance rates, our academic rates, and things of that nature. And typically, we have in the past sought out parent input, student input, teacher input. I must disclose fully, that did not happen this year. Those, those Google Forms, those Google surveys did not go out this year. However, they have in years past, which usually drives our, our moves and our, our changes with this. However, the end of the year, quite frankly, got away from me, and I did not send them out in a timely fashion. So, that is squarely on me.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Oakley, go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. The proposed changes look great, and I wondered if you could talk a little bit more about the, the cellphone recording policy and the specific question I had, but I'd love to hear your general thoughts is, I know that out in the public, if you record someone, there's some sort of assumption of, of, or there is no assumption of privacy because they're in the public. I'm assuming that's probably what drives some of this. But I wonder, could you talk about what, what led to this and, you know, why it's a big deal?
Sure. Our current policy that we've had for, for as long as I can remember basically creates a really gray area that we have established is really difficult for our staff and our students to manage. And as it's written right now, students are allowed to have their cellphones on and on their person, unvibrate only, and it should be away. And what we've seen causes is when students are obeying that policy, it, it buzzes, and then fear of missing out takes over, and it, it just, the curiosity, get at, getting after it and having that conversation. This, this year, we wanted to move away from the gray and not only empower staff to, to really regulate their own classroom the way that they see fit, because you have a number of staff that, that do not want or do not want that disruption, don't want to allow cellphones for one iota, for one moment. And you also have another group of staff that have every reason to want to use it for educational value, for educational needs. But we also have that gray where it's being used and it shouldn't be used. And in, in fact, in this room last night, I was really appealing to the freshman parents to please don't try to reach out to their student by text during the day, because that could ultimately, oh, I have a text. They have it out in a, in a time or a place that's inappropriate. And then that could land that, that student, you know, in, in an area where they could be consequence or asked to turn their phone in, taking away from teaching and learning in that concentration and going down a rabbit hole, quite frankly, that we don't want to go down. So, so we just have identified this as a problem area, and we're going to pilot this avenue as a way to address that and hopefully see some of those disruptions and those, you know, toe-to-toe issues in the classroom be a thing of the past.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions for Mr. Dizel?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just one edit, under subsection B regarding the cellphone policy. Can I just ask you to change that to protocol? Policy is set by school committee. Protocol would be determined by the school district.
If you'll permit me to do so, I'll go through the entire document, and I'll make that change where applicable.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I would make a motion that we accept the handbook changes with the edit suggested.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone in the audience have any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dizel. Drive safely. Actually, did you want to cover the athletic handbook changes as well?
In, in way of formal introduction, I'd like to invite Mr. Ryan Sylvia to join me here at the mic to review those changes.
Sure. Ryan Sylvia, Athletic Director.
So, we have a few kind of minor changes and just more updates than anything. But first one is just an update for the number of athletic offerings to 32, just to make sure we had an accurate number there, and including our, our cheerleaders and majorettes in that number, and also the Nichols Middle School teams to the, for the fall and spring seasons. Number two is updating information relating to our membership in the South Shore League and the season start dates for all three seasons. So, just updating the start dates. The membership of the South Shore League remains the same with the exception of two schools switching places. So, there's a large division and a small division. Abington High School's enrollment went up. Rockland High School's enrollment went down. So, Abington moved to the small division and, I'm sorry. Abington moved to the large division. Rockland moved to the small division. So, we just had to change that language in our handbook to reflect that. There was a section in the handbook, Athletic Handbook devoted strictly to cheerleading, and no other sport had that section. And that was because cheerleading, the way it's governed is by the Massachusetts Secondary Schools and Administrators Association, not the MIAA. But in the Middleborough Public Schools, cheerleading falls under the auspices of the Athletic Department as well as majorettes. So, it was just language that we really didn't need. They're listed under an athletic program as the rest of our athletic teams are. So, we took that section out. And then, there was a, in the, in the handbook, we had a section on all of the agreements that we ask parents to sign off on when they register for athletics. And there were new agreements added last year for the diversity, equity, and inclusion pledge, and also the option to take the implicit bias course. Both, both of those agreements were, are the only agreements in the athletics registration that are optional, that parents do not have to check off. But we did have to add that they were agreements that were listed in the registration. So, that was the fourth piece. And then, the addition of a no-cellphone protocol in the locker room. We have a section on locker rooms, and we wanted to add that there's school protocol to not allow cellphone use in the locker room at all. So, I, I think in regular school, the regular school day, students have the ability to use their cellphone or take their cellphone out in common areas, lunchroom, things like that. But in the locker room, basically, there's a no-tolerance policy because there's, our protocol, sorry, because there's no, there's no video surveillance whatsoever in the locker room. Pretty much every cellphone is a camera now. So, it really is taking away the, the aspect of, you know, student just got changed from practice, and they're texting their mom or dad to come pick them up or making a quick phone call in the locker room. And they're probably doing everything right, except when they're holding that phone, they could also be taking a picture or recording. So, we wanted to make sure that, yes, they can have their cellphone in their bag or in their locker, but at this moment, they take it out to make a call or send a text, they have to go out to the hallway or outdoors. And that, I believe, is the last change to the athletic handbook.
Questions? You made off easy, Ryan. All right. With that, Chair, I understand a motion to approve the athletic handbook changes as noted.
So, move.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone in the audience have any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you both. At this time, I'll call up Principal Heidi Latander, who's going to present out on proposed handbook changes for the John T. Nichols Middle School.
Good evening, Chairman Young and school committee members and Superintendent Carolyn Lyons. Congratulations on your first meeting. Thank you for having me to present the school committee, I mean, school committee, the school handbook changes for this coming year, the 2022-2023 school year. As Mr. Dizel mentioned, we are updating some of our dates and our personnel changes, and we've had quite a few personnel changes. And we also have two new assistant principals that were hired over the summer, Jennifer Gavoni and Holly Sullivan. Unfortunately, they were not able to attend this evening. We do have some minor changes to share with you, and some of the updates do include also telephones and electronic devices and photos and videos being strictly forbidden from being on the bus. We've had some issues with that, and we'd like to follow our regular discipline protocol if there are issues in that area. And as Ryan Sylvia spoke, I wanted to add, suggest lockers to that area if that's possible, because we have our after-school sports, and we would like to not have the phones on or videotaping while they're in the locker room changing and getting ready for their athletics in the afternoon. Some of the bus rules, there was, we talked about the phones as well on the buses. And then, there are some health service updates. The Chapter 76, Section 15 on immunizations, I'm suggesting to be updated. The body mass index and the updates to the wellness policy, as well as the crutches, wheelchair, and transportation protocols. And then, our civil rights section, we are just changing that the title. Nine Coordinator will be Mr. Kevin Avatably. He's also under the nondiscrimination, Chapter 622, Section 504, as well as the McKinney-Vento homeless education assistance. In our progressive discipline area outline, we did add a statement saying, while this is not an exhaustive list, our code of conduct includes the following, and we added, we have listed teacher redirection and warning, family notification, teacher detention, administrative detention, community service, restorative justice, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, and expulsion. That's generally the order, but we did add the community service, restorative justice, because sometimes, depending if, on the actions, if a student has, you know, destroyed or ruined something, we've had students stay after to work with the custodians to fix or clean up whatever that might be, whatever happened. And then, the restorative justice is really about restoring relationships with the staff, student to student or student to staff, depending on the situation of what happened. So, there are many different ways we like to approach, you know, discipline consequences in order to support our students for a more relationship-building, restoring relationships in the, in the school and in the classroom setting. And then, also, remove appendix due regarding face coverings. Those are our minor changes to the handbook for the 2222-3 school year.
Mr. Chair. I just have a question regarding the health updates in the handbook. Were those changes made regarding the vaccination requirements? I know you mentioned a few different things. I just, I'm not sure if I heard it.
Oh, so the immunization has listed under it in the handbook, the vaccination, vaccinations updates.
So, it's going by Mass General Laws?
Yes, Chapter 76, Section 15, was taken right from the, the legal language.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other question, Mr. Oakley?
I was just curious, just for my own education, about the, the body mass index updates. Just generally, what was that, what changed?
Give me one second.
Sure.
That is not my expertise, the health area.
Mine neither.
But I do have my notes here. So, it's actually a whole paragraph of information. I can share this with you if you'd like, or you want me to read the?
Can I go run and grab it?
Sure. Go right ahead.
Think it'd be easier than reading them.
We'll let Mr. Oakley compare and contrast body mass data. Riveting.
These are the health updates that we confer with Paula Magnasco, our district nurse leader, in making sure that the health immunizations, the health and wellness section of our handbook is up to date.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, it seems, it seems like it's complying with, again, another Mass General Law, it looks like. And so, it looks pretty benign, but thank you. I appreciate that.
It's just an update of, you know, I think we had an older version of it in our handbook, and we need to update it based on what was current.
Got it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Seeing no one, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone in the audience have any questions? Seeing no one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay. So, the next item that brings me to the bulk of my presentation. What I'm going to do is pull up my slides. And then, will I see those on that screen? Or will I only have them up there? Yeah, they're not there. See? There we go. Okay. So, what I'm going to talk to you about tonight are a couple of, couple of items, starting with the MAS S Summer Conference. MAS S is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. I went to the Paul J. Andrews Executive Institute this summer, which is on the Cape from July 11th through 14th. The opening day, in fact, the conference is really only July 12th through the 14th. The 11th was reserved for NSEP, which is the New Superintendent's Induction Program. So, if I can pull those back up. What I'll do is tell you a little bit about the conference, and then I will tell you about NSEP. So, the conference is a statewide conference for superintendents in Massachusetts. There's opportunities for connecting with area-based roundtable groups, which meet throughout the year. This is a resource for all superintendents. There's an opportunity to collaborate with each other, trade information, that sort of, that sort of practice, and that work begins at that conference. There are a multitude of resources for superintendents at this multi-day conference, including those who are new in the role. Because there's a, because it takes place over multiple days, there's a degree of choice, and it's broken down by individual seminars and keynote presentations. So, you self, you self-select into which seminars you're going to attend. So, over the 12th through the 14th, each morning began with different keynote speakers. Sorry, I just need to look up at those slides. They're not, they're not responding to this. There we go. The keynote speakers included, on the morning of the 12th, it was John Doria and Rob Evans. And they presented out on various topics regarding, Rob Evans is a psychologist, John Doria, who now works at the University of Pennsylvania. But they really focused their presentation on, you know, looking at how the pandemic has impacted this job, you know, challenges facing superintendents, including personnel. The following day was, Dr. Kendi came and spoke. He actually, there was a panel that involved the president of MAS S and another superintendent who facilitated the conversations focusing around racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, which took on a pretty big role at this conference over several days. There were a multitude of topics covered, and I recaptured some of them here, as I just said. Racial equity and diversity was a major player in this conference, along with elevating student voice. Project 351 was there, and I'll talk about that in a couple of minutes. But there was a very prominent focus on having students lead us in learning, which I think is, is important and in line with kind of some of the things we've already started talking about here in Middleborough. There was a legal presentation on issues that range from employment issues all the way to athletics, and then selected curricular topics that you could, as I said, self-select into the seminars and learn, learn more about. Same with social emotional learning, and then multi-tiered systems of supports. Project 351 is a student organization where students are selected to represent every community in Massachusetts. We have a representative for Project 351, and it's really a leadership seminar where students are engaged in volunteerism on a whole variety of topics. They actually led several conversations during the, the three days. It was really amazing to see. It was great to, to learn from students, to be honest with you. So, what this conference really focuses on is professional development for school leaders, understanding that, you know, you can't lead a school system from a position that you have nothing to learn. So, that's what the conference really is. Lastly, they actually spent the second part, or the first part of the last day just talking about work-life balance and ways to support school staff, not just coming out of the, the pandemic, but in general, in education. All in all, I thought it was time extremely well spent. I want to talk to you a little bit about that first day, as I mentioned. The New Superintendent's Induction Program is something that I'm part of as a brand-new superintendent. Tonight with me is Dr. Maureen LaCroix, who is my NSEP, as I will refer to it, my NSEP coach. Dr. LaCroix is herself a former superintendent of several years. She came from the Bedford Public Schools. Prior to her being a superintendent, she was an assistant superintendent and an internal candidate when she became a superintendent. And Dr. LaCroix will be with me for quite some time. This program, NSEP is a three-year program. I am in year one of year of three. She'll provide coaching, which will occur during various meetings throughout the school year, including school committee, leadership team, executive committee. She'll be present at a host of events, including our opening day exercises on August 29th. So, July 11th was really the kickoff. It was an entire full-day session that touches on a wide variety of topics. And that's what that next bullet is, to really tell you a little bit about. And that's what that next bullet is, to really tell you a little bit about, you know, why ENSEP? What is this program? It's really a partnership between MAS S and DESE. It offers people who are new in this role, coaching, mentoring, and guidance. The hope being that people that have this seat will not only be successful, but make good decisions for their communities. It's, as I said, it's a three-year program, and I'm in year one, which includes eight content days, and then six hours of coaching per month. This is tremendously invaluable. I had another session on Monday of this week, that was this, Monday of this week. And every single topic is relevant to matters that I'm facing right now. For example, leading my leadership team. It involves a lot of strategic planning and strategic thinking. They're, they're really central elements to the whole program. Why is it important? Why does it matter whether or not your superintendent, especially a new superintendent, goes to this program? Try to remember that really the focus behind this program is helping us draft a strategy for district improvement. One of the goals of the program is to ultimately yield superintendents who are effective and successful in their jobs, and to provide leadership and guidance in that leadership for a high-functioning leadership team. They're also there to, this program is also there to help with the implementation of systems, structures, and practices that will support the district's strategy, budgetary planning, and most of all, above all, improving student achievement. It's the ultimate premise, that if all of these things occur, that that will trickle down to our students and their achievement every day. So what can you expect from participation in this program? Well, beyond the fact that you'll have my attendance anytime, those sessions are already scheduled, they're year-long, which doesn't include additional coaching sessions that Dr. La Croix will be scheduling with me. Tonight, I'll present my preliminary entry plan. I will come back with a revised entry plan. Eventually, we will be drafting a strategy for district improvement, in addition to training, coaching, and mentoring. And again, the goal is really to improve student achievement. So that preliminary entry plan, which is what I'll present on next, is, was the substance of the work in July. And I was going to present it to you in July, but we, we ended up not meeting. So before I go on into the entry plan, I wanted to, I just wanted to take a brief pause, because that really covers that item on the MAS S Summer Conference and ENSEP, and I wanted to see if you had any questions.
I do want to welcome Dr. La Croix, because I know we'll be seeing more of you. I would tell the committee, the superintendent's induction program is a program we, we dealt with previously with our last superintendent. And to be honest, going back to when I was on a committee in another town, when you didn't use the superintendent's induction program, what you factored into your budget was coaching for a new superintendent. So you generally went through MAS S, asked them to give a list of coaches, and a coach was hired by the school community to help with the superintendent. So this is not new. It's just, over time, it's been sort of the training process has been brought together, and everyone runs through the training process, which I think is fantastic, and they've done an excellent job. And I know Brian enjoyed it, and I know from having conversations with other superintendents that they enjoyed it and recommended, so.
I couldn't echo it more. Already, it's already proven not just worth its time and money, but, but truly an opportunity to learn from people who have had this job and sat in this seat and faced problems. Of course, they're not always all going to be the same, but it's truly invaluable to learn from someone who has done the job, let alone for several years. The coaching staff, and really the teaching staff of the entire program is incredibly impressive, not just from their CVs or their resumes, but to listen to them talk, their understanding and their knowledge of leadership, and their experience working with people, which I think is critically important in this seat.
Other questions?
Sure. Sounds like a great program. I love that it's kind of like baked into the, into your first year. I wish, I think a lot of people wish they could have that in their jobs as well, but so specifically in regards to the, the Anders, Paul Anders Executive event that you went to, I was just wondering if you could talk about what, what was one thing that was surprising that you learned there with regard to your role? Surprising, interesting?
Well, I mean, there, there was a lot. I was very interested to listen to Dr. Kendi. And what I will tell you is that the state came with, an MAS S really, not the state, MAS S came with a strategy for us on navigating racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. And as will not surprise you, these topics are complicated and emotionally charged, and can be potentially very divisive. And not only was that guidance tremendously helpful, because it was concrete, but it gave me a platform from which to bring to my leadership team, which I then did at the retreat last week. You know, it's not so prescriptive as to tell us every step, but it gave us a framework to work within, which I think is helpful to the public, so that they can have some assurance of what's going to happen. So as I've told you before, any steps we're going to take, we're going to be transparent about those steps before they occur, because I think navigating this work is tricky and needed. But I was grateful to have that guidance, it was guidance I didn't feel like I had before the conference. So that's maybe what I would say about that.
Awesome. Cool. Thank you.
Other questions?
Other questions?
Great. So do you want me to move into the?
Oh, we can do that, whatever you want.
Up to you.
Let's do this next.
I can't read that. Oh, the donation?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll do that next, because she's here.
Oh, okay.
No, no problem. There was a miscommunication. Paul, if you could come up, because we wanted to take a few minutes to thank somebody who made a generous donation. And on top of that, it's a situation in which the family has consistently donated to Middleborough, especially through Masba. And so we just want to take a minute. So Paul, I just want to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Thank you, Mrs. Lyons, and good evening, everyone. I just want to take an opportunity that, that we invited Kathy Pereira here tonight from Muckeys Liquors to really thank her for all of her tremendous support of the schools and the community as well, that notoriously, that anytime there's ever a need, that Kathy and her amazing family are always stepping up of how they can help. And just recently, that there was a donation of $1,000 to support the Finish Strong program here at the high school, to be able to make sure the fact that that program can continue, and to making sure that all of our students can start the year with their class shirts, that we have become a tradition here. And so just, not only just that, but over the years, everything from speech and theater workshop to student council to programs in the community. I know that there was a lot of work done in the summertime with the Burtwood School, with the Pride event in June. There's just anytime there's an opportunity to give back and to, into support, that Muckeys is there. So I just wanted to make sure it was an opportunity for, one, to bring the donation to you as the committee for your approval, but also as well, of just a thank you to Kathy and her amazing family for all that they do for this town.
Thank you. Kathy, again, we can't appreciate enough what you and your family do for our community. And over and over again, you are more than generous. So we did want to take a little bit of time and thank you. So thank you very much. Great. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. So with that, I'll move into the preliminary entry plan, which you have from the Dropbox. Okay. Before I kind of get into the specifics of my entry plan, I thought it would be helpful to talk about what an entry plan is. What it really is, is a plan for listening, learning, and planning. It's very tempting to begin a job like this. As I told you, I had many ideas about what was needed here in this, in this community, and ways I could help. But it's critically important that I not skip the step of listening and learning, because quite honestly, no matter what job you have, there's always more you can learn. My lens changed immediately on July 1st, and I'm certainly learning every single day things I didn't know before. It's also a plan to work collaboratively with stakeholders. It's an opportunity to meet with the public, talk with families, talk with various members of our community, and consult with them, which I think is also important before we draft this kind of plan of strategic improvement. And then lastly, it's a place of inquiry. Rather than approaching the problem with, I already know the answer, the approach really is, what don't I know yet? What do I need to know before I formulate a solution? So the entry plan has different components. These are the components that I put in there. I used guiding questions in order to kind of provide some information as to what is the information I'm looking to collect. I'm going to share a little bit about my core values, so you understand me as a professional, a person. I'll talk a little bit about interviews, which stakeholder groups I'm looking to meet with, the document review. I didn't list all of the documents that are in your formal entry plan, and I can talk about that tonight. And it's divided into three phases by time, so that you can have an understanding of what is going to happen and when. So the guiding questions, I put all five of them here, really are important, because this is going to govern the information I'm going to collect. It's really all about what you're going to ask. And what I'm really looking at is, what do we do well? And how can we build on what we do well? Where does our school system require growth or an examination of practice? How can I, as the superintendent, best support you and your school? When I say you, I mean students, families, caregivers. How can we strengthen our partnership and collaboration as a large school community? And does every student and member of our, our school community feel as though they belong in our community? I think these are the questions that will yield the strategy that I think we can all agree would benefit our students, and specifically their achievement and development. The core values I listed are, in the plan I took right and, and brought into this, this presentation. Ultimately, my core values are divided into four different areas. All students deserve an education where they feel that they are included, respected, and belong as a valued member of the community. All students can learn and achieve at a high level when presented with rigorous and meaningful instruction. A healthy school climate recognizes and supports the needs of its students and staff. And promoting a culture of transparency and feedback will lead to elevating our educational system and program, and foster a true partnership with all stakeholders. So what you can see is my values really start with children and students, move into the greater community, and our, and the people who work in our community, and then ultimately come back to our families, so that our families have a degree of transparency and understanding and communication, which I think is, is desired. So I'll begin with Phase One, which is already underway. It started in July, and will continue through the end of the calendar year in December. During this time, I'll be conducting data review. I will be conducting interviews and surveys. So if all of you paying attention at home, if you get a survey from me, the surveys that I would be sending you are specifically asking for information relative to the entry plan that I'm going to be relying upon. And then school and classroom visits. You know, you really have to be a presence in our buildings and with our children to understand what's going on. So Phase One is really a desire to collect information from a whole host of sources. That data review involves, I gave you a whole list of, of places I would be looking, everything from student discipline data to enrollment and attendance data, performance data on, on state and local assessments, financial audits, school committee policies. I mean, it runs the gamut. You, to really look at a system, you have to look at all of the pieces of information. And then while I'm doing this, those sample questions, I mean, I gave you, I didn't give you an exhaustive list of my interview questions, because sometimes you have a conversation and more questions come up, so you really can't predict every question. But I wanted to give you a list of the types of questions I would answer, and I selected three of them here to share with the community tonight. What structures exist to communicate with parents and caregivers to get their input, their perspective, and their feedback? Is there dialogue with parents and caregivers about the issues that are important to them? I think it's important that our school community not launch sort of in a direction, leaving parents and caregivers feeling like their concerns have not been heard or heeded or planned for. To what extent do all categories of staff contribute to building a culture that emphasizes trust, connection, and support? That's really looking at the fact that schools are so much more than just teachers, right? We have related service providers, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, nursing staff, cafeteria workers, administrative assistants. Everybody plays a role in not only a student's success, but a student's perception of how they feel about their school community. What other measures besides testing data are prioritized and emphasized by the district to measure and communicate success? And I think that's a very critical point of questions I'm going to be asking, because it's very tempting to just look at documents and data and say, well, this is how you performed on this test. But I've always been a proponent of letting more than just a piece of paper describe a student or a school, a classroom, or a district. So I'm going to be asking about, what are the pieces that don't jump off the page, right? I'm not relying on simple MCAS reports, as an example. So those are, those are kind of a smattering of questions. There's many more. Who am I going to be talking to? Well, I was, I had the good fortune to be with Mr. Brainigan yesterday, as he welcomed his freshman class, and I was lucky enough to be able to talk with them. The most important stakeholder group to me will be students. I do not believe, nor have I ever believed, that you can plan for K-12 students without consulting them. And while, of course, they can't make all the decisions, I think it would be truly an egregious error to not include them and give them voice in this process. And I feel the very same way about families and caregivers. So these are two of the most important stakeholder groups. There's also community-based members. That looks at, for example, the town manager, the chief of police, the chief of the fire department. Our school does not operate in a vacuum. It operates within an interconnected web of other people in our community. And it's important that we have regular relationships, positive relationships in communication with those groups. District faculty. I want to meet with people who are teaching our students. And then district staff. There are many people who work in our school system who are not teachers, and their perspective's just as important. And then lastly, district administration, who of course, I meet with regularly and see all the time. That will conclude Phase One. Phase Two is when you can expect me to come back with more information on this plan. Between January 2023 and March 2023, we'll begin Phase Two. I'll come back with a lengthy report of findings, because as I've just laid out, all that information, as you can imagine, the report's probably going to be pretty robust. And I want to report that out in multiple locations. Of course, I'll bring it to you as the school committee. I'll bring it to the district leadership team, as I would anything else. And then I also want to hold community forums. I don't want to rely, not that school committee meetings aren't wonderful and important, but I know that not all families tune in. So I want to make sure I give separate place for this particular process, for people to connect, ask their questions, have their concerns heard. And at the end of that phase would be the start of the district strategy, the start of writing the strategy. And that really brings me to Phase Three. Phase Three, between March of 2023 and August of 2023, is drafting and implementing that new district strategy, so that by the time we open school next year, we are hitting the ground running. Everything flows from an entry plan, your professional development, your school improvement plans. So it's pretty important that we get this right and take the time to get it right. Why is this entry plan important? As I just said, everything flows from it. The outcome, really the endpoint of your entry plan, is the district strategy for continuous improvement. And it's very important that it be calibrated right. If we move too quickly, or discount certain information, or don't account for certain information, the whole strategy could be inaccurate, or not calibrated correctly, or miss the mark entirely. So this is a moment in time where it's important to go slow to ultimately go fast. Take your time, make sure your information is accurate, make sure it's based on data, and consult with stakeholders. So what can you expect from me? Certainly, there will be opportunities for interviews, surveys, meetings, observations, inquiry of all kinds, and then proposed action based on the information collected. You can expect that I won't come up with something that you haven't heard and read about time and again before the strategy is drafted. The goal is for there to be no surprises, and ultimately for universal agreement. So before I go on to the hiring update, I wanted to take a pause, because that concludes my presentation on the entry plan, and I wanted to know what questions you had for me.
Questions about the entry plan?
Yes.
Teresa?
I actually have a couple of questions regarding communication. So obviously, communication is important. I wondered if you could tell us what that will look like. Our previous superintendent would sort of do his Friday Flash with the committee, so I wondered if you had a plan as far as what you thought that would look like, and how you communicate with us as a committee?
Sure. I actually knew a little bit about the Friday Flash. I am happy to, if that is a practice that you liked, I'm happy to continue the Friday Flash. I already instituted something very similar with the leadership team. I got some feedback from a couple of my principals that said, you know, you send a lot of email. And I said, yes, I do. And the recommendation was, might it be helpful for you to kind of keep a running log and do a weekly email so that they have one stop do a weekly email so that they have one-stop shopping when possible, to the extent practicable? And it's worked out quite well. So I would be more than interested in doing a Friday Flash. It's important that we have open communication and you don't feel left in the dark.
The other thing I should mention, too, is the Friday, when we have had this conversation, the conversation's really about establishing, in my mind, the superintendent's goals for the year.
That's, that was my second question.
So we're going to have that conversation as a committee, as a subcommittee, and then bring to you the goals. A lot of the goals, to be honest, will be in the entry plan because that's a fundamental focus. But sort of some of the minor details, like the Friday Flash and everything like that, comes through that. And I also think, too, like the Friday Flash was sort of intermittent during the summer because the summers are a little odder and stranger, and then they're more detailed during the school year because of how, what happens during the school day, you know, what happens with the superintendent of school. So that hasn't been forgotten.
Yeah, that was just my second question, was just regarding your own personal goals as a superintendent and when we kind of might be looking at a timeline for that. So if it sounds like that's been talked about, so that's great. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just echo what Ms. Farley said. The Friday Flash was, I loved the Friday Flash because it felt like it was a way for us to stay up on some of the less major things without being all up in your business all the time, asking. And so it was really nice just kind of being able to scroll through and say, okay, I'll follow up with them. So I would love that, if we could do that. Yep.
Other questions?
First, to tag on to that, I would also say that it would be important, I don't know if there was, if there's another better way to do, you know, something similar, but whatever works for you that works best. I know that it worked best for our last superintendent to do the Friday Flash, but I don't want it to be this stagnant, you know, if you need to change something, if it's an easier way for you to communicate with us, I'd rather facilitate that than stick with the same old thing.
Sure. I mean, when it comes to communicating ongoing business, email is, quite honestly, quick and dirty.
Yeah, exactly.
So there's a desire there, but, you know, I'm not afraid to change things up, but if something was working well, I also like keeping things that were smooth and positive consistent. You might notice, I believe you all received my Smore. I sent out a welcome letter that did not go physically out in the mail. I used Smore, and one of the reasons I use that platform is because it's translatable in every language instantaneously. So I like its accessibility features, and I also felt like I could communicate many items in a more clear fashion. When you're reading a letter and it's a wall of text, I think a lot of families feel kind of overwhelmed by it and/or that, you know, it may not all pertain to them. So what I like about Smore is it gives you the opportunity to break into little chapters, and then you can pick and choose what it is you're going to read about. So that's an example of how I might be different. But the Friday Flash I'd heard about before, and I knew that it was well-liked, and I have no desire to disrupt that because I do think ongoing, above all, I think ongoing communication is important for you. And me.
Then my second question pertained to your Phase One regarding the stakeholder groups. I love this, this is great. I was actually just wondering, which group or which bullet point on this group do you intend on? Is this in the order in which you will interview, or is this, you know, how do you plan on going forward with this?
Sure. It isn't the order. What I'm going to do is create a schedule that I'll share with you, just so that you have, you know, entry points. There might be times where you can't make, you know, a meeting that I had scheduled or a time, and you're welcome to join wherever it suits you. What I really have to do is sit down and think. So for example, when I'm engaging with families, I can't just hold in-person meetings at 10:30 in the morning. It's not going to be accessible if you have a job outside of Middleborough and you're not home until 6 o'clock in the evening. So I'm aware of that, and I do need some time to kind of plan it all out. But once I have everything scheduled, I'll send it over. That would be something you'd see in the Friday Flash, and if you have feedback, I'd welcome it, too.
Brilliant. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I should point out that the entry plan is the exact same entry plan that Brian went through. The bulk of the work of the entry plan is interviewing and having conversations with the community. And that takes time, and we want it to take time because we want it to be thorough and people to be heard. So that's the biggest thing.
Sure. What I can tell you, just to get at, you know, one of the stakeholder groups I said was students. I've already worked with Principal Brannigan and Principal Lattender in creating a superintendent's roundtable where they're going to work with me in a cross-section of students at both of, at each building. And I already have all those Friday sessions planned throughout the entire school year where I'm having an opportunity to, you know, hopefully listen more than talk, since I'm definitely a talker, but I really want to hear their experience through their eyes. And I'm in conversations with Principal White and Principal Thompson on how to harness that at the elementary level. Elementary children are somewhat different in the sense that it may not be the same experience, but I don't want them skipped either. So we have to look at how do we engage our elementary populations. I've talked about going to their town meetings, and just being, you know, someone who can sit and listen to even that process would be beneficial, but I'd like to have something a little more formed. So that's an example of something that's already scheduled and planned. But my community-based events, where I'm going to engage parents, is not yet planned. I wanted the school year to start up, kind of let schedules get settled. What I'd like to avoid, if I can, for example, if there's a meeting at the elementary school, I don't want to hold a listening session then or a focus group then because I don't want parents to feel like they have to choose. So in order to do that, I have to see all the events first and then go from there. But we open very shortly, so I'll be able to do that sooner than later.
I just had one more question for you. So after pulling all of this data, would that be something that you're giving to us or maybe just giving us general ideas as to, giving us that data, you know, of course, I don't want, I don't want to see hugely personal pieces of data, that's not what I'm looking for, but general statistics so that we know how you're being informed and we can have the wisdom, you know, share your wisdom with us on.
Right. The goal is to kill you with data, right? And my role is to pull out the trends. So it's easier, if I'm going to say we're experiencing, you know, increased discipline rates with X population, I need to have, I need to be able to show you why I'm saying that. So what you can expect is, one, a fairly lengthy report, but, two, a report that's focused on trends so that you have something to do with the data. I'm not going to be asking you to disaggregate data that I'll collect. That'll be for me to do. But at least then you'll have some confidence in saying, okay, this is what, this is why she thinks what she thinks, and this is the data that led to that conclusion, right? The goal is, it should be very A plus B equals C, right? It should be very straightforward if I do it correctly. So you can keep me honest on that. If it gets too jargony, that's the other thing I'd really like to avoid, you know, those of us in education love to use industry terms, and I think that can be very confusing. So I'm going to go out of my way to make sure that this report is readable.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Other question?
Question, I love that you want to incorporate students. My question is, if you do at the high school and middle school level, when you're going to do those roundtables with the students, do you anticipate that it will be the same group of students each meeting and you follow them throughout the year, or will the group of kids change each meeting?
Great question. The way I laid it out was a cross-section of students. So, for example, I didn't want one student and six of his closest friends to be in the group because that would be a very myopic view of the school. So we talked about who we'd be looking for, right? Representatives from all walks of life in the school. Now, ideally, that group would stay together all year, but I have to leave a carve-out. Sometimes, when you pull a group of students together, the conversation doesn't always flow. So I have to leave some degree of wiggle room, and truly, if somebody doesn't want to be part of the group, right? That's the other part of this. I certainly am not trying to torture anybody, but I'm open to suggestions in terms of if you have a thought on that. And I can share with you the documents that I've prepared on the roundtable, just so you can kind of see the idea in practice. But I really am trying to target, for example, at the high school, I want representatives from each grade. I don't want, not no disrespect to the senior class, but I don't want just seniors. I want to make sure I'm talking to freshmen. These are kids who are just coming through our doors here so that they can tell me how much they love Start Strong and, you know, it was really kind of amazing, I watched them walk in, and it was like a party. And some of them, it was such an exercise in psychology. Some of them came in and they were thrilled, and they were kind of hamming it up, and others, you could see, were just really wanted to melt into the carpet. So it was kind of a fun exercise to see, but that's a good example of, you know, every child's going to approach things differently. So this group will be most effective if I get a cross-section of students who are okay with talking. That's really the goal.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Thank you.
Is there a vote on this?
Nope.
Okay.
It's your entry point.
Okay. So what I'm going to go to next is a hiring update, which is something that has been keeping me quite busy over the last few weeks. What I can, I think I went, yeah, there we go. Yeah, there we go. Okay. Summer always means hiring season, right? This is a, this is part of the industry standard. What I can tell you is we have welcomed some new members of our administrative team, which includes two assistant principals at the middle school, two special education coordinators, one at the middle school and one at the high school. We've also got several newly signed members of the team that include teachers, paraprofessionals, which we call ESPs, related service providers, cafeteria staff, business office staff, and technology staff. Hiring also includes promotions. So I know there was some conversation in Facebook about what about this person or that person? There are new hires who are people who are brand-new to our district, and the people who have been, I'm happy to report, promoted from within. So we have a couple of examples of paraprofessionals or ESPs who have achieved the role of teacher, which is always a really exciting moment. Same with promotion from within their existing department. For example, you would have assistant cooks in the cafeteria who've been promoted to head cook. And then there's also been administrative advancement, members of our administrative team who have taken on new roles. There are still some positions to be filled, and I included them here so I could go through them with the public. We are still looking for a halftime or .5 school psychologist at the middle and high school. That's a split position. A special education teacher for one of our specialized programs at the middle school. We are looking for several paraprofessionals still, three at the middle school, three at the high school, and two at the Mary Kay Good School. We are looking for a second-grade teacher at the Henry B. Berklin School, a special education coach for the elementary, we call it the elementary complex, but that's a position that would serve both the HBB and the MKG. Cafeteria and recess monitors, three at the Berklin School. And then lastly, a school counselor, which is a guidance, we used to call it a guidance counselor, it's now referred to as school counselor at our high school. And I also wanted to point out that onboarding staff also occurs throughout the year, and I pulled this number just because I thought you would all be interested to know. You know, it's tempting to think we do all of our hiring in the summer, but that's actually not true. Last school year alone, we onboarded an additional 26 personnel after the start of the school year. So what you'll hear when we get to our mentoring and induction program update is that we're taking steps to try to record training sessions and make that accessible so that if you are someone who onboards in our district in October or November, you don't miss out because you weren't here at the start of the year. So that is my hiring update. I had an update about the kindergarten social, which is really an opportunity for kindergarten students and families to meet and socialize and engage in some fun activities, get to know each other, and get ready for the new school year. That will be Friday, August 26th, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at Camp Umikus. I was talking with the principal, Jeremy Goble, at the Memorial Early Childhood Center, and there are quite a few fun activities planned. So I think if you're listening out there and you have a kindergarten student, please consider coming. I think there will be lots of fun held by all. Last, actually, any questions before I move on to the School Street update? Okay. I'll invite Jim Hutchinson to come down, and while he's coming down, I can take a couple of minutes to say thank you to Jim and his entire team. This summer, his team has done truly amazing work in the ridiculous, grueling heat that has plagued all of us here in New England. He had several projects. School Street was but one project that he was working on, and if you remember, this decision was made right at the end of the year. So Mr. Hutchinson was very understanding when I came to him and said, I have this really important project I need you to do, and I need you to do it right away. And he has not complained on a single time, which is shocking to me, to be honest with you. And he's here to talk a little bit about some of where we are on schedule, some of what he's encountered, and then I have some pictures. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Hutchinson, and let me know if you want me to jump in.
Okay. Yep, no, so the School Street project is moving right along. We actually have a project that is a little bit more important, not that that isn't important, but we have a TLC space that we're redoing, and that is a definite that needs to be open for August 31st. So we've jumped over there this week, but School Street project is moving right along. We've done quite a bit of work there. Our flooring contractor had an opportunity to get in and do the floors over, which you'll see in a little bit, the floors are already in place in almost half the building. And we are protecting those floors as we continue to do construction in there, not so much construction, but some new paneling, covering up the old lath strips, painting, new light fixtures, and new heaters in each space as well. The flooring contractor reached out to us, it's a local contractor, Will Motts, who does all of our other schools as well. But there was going to be a jump in pricing, so we were fortunate that he reached out to us and we were able to get the pricing ahead of time and not lose out on the, on that piece. So right now, four rooms on the first floor, 100% completed, that he's doing the fourth space today and tomorrow, so the entire first floor will be done, finished floor. It's applied flooring, and like I said, there'll be some pictures, and it really looks great. So the old floor, there were the old floors underneath that had VCT tile on it, and then we've removed that. Summer interns, for the most part, have removed that VCT tile, and now the new plank flooring is down. Scott Beach is working on the walls, which had like a monolite product, which is almost something that you see in a bathroom or a kitchen, kind of indestructible, but it had seen better days. So we've removed that from the walls, and then we're putting four-by-eight sheets of beadboard, kind of gives it the old look with the crown molding on the top. The windows are being trimmed out, and then all of that will be repainted, and the lighting fixtures will all be changed. We'll upgrade those lighting fixtures. About four years ago, they're an older fixture, but about four years ago, we put LED bulbs in there, but we're going to redo those lights so that they can be adjustable. One of the disadvantages to LEDs, they're very bright, but we are now installing lights where you can work the brightness of that through your phone. It's a Bluetooth app that you can dim those lights if need be in a classroom or in this case, an office space. So we, as a facilities department, have pulled out of there this week, and we'll be back in there next week to get into the TLC space so that we can have that done for, that'll probably be done by next Thursday. So they have a new boiler, we have a new boiler going into School Street. We've had all the radiators removed prior to the flooring coming in. It was an old steam system, and it worked off of one thermostat. So Mrs. Keating kind of regulated every space in the building. The new heating system, each space will have its own thermostat, it'll be a hot water system, more efficient boiler running that space. That will be in, obviously, before the cold weather because all the other radiators are gone. So let's see, what else do we have over there? Right now, they're putting in the new cabling for the cameras and also the data runs are being pulled in. LCN is pulling that through. They started yesterday, so they're running that with Sean Sisliano. So any questions?
Mr. Chair, could you just kind of highlight, I know a couple of meetings ago, there was some questions regarding the doors at MKG and the safety there, and then we had talked about maybe getting some kind of consultants in. I kind of wanted to know if maybe you and Mrs. Lyons had kind of had that conversation or where we were at with it.
Yep, so the MKG doors were taken care of. We did have Signet back in to take care of that swipe. So the issue we had there with those doors, the main doors coming in, is the swipes weren't consistently working. So then that required the secretary to buzz people in. So those doors are now working. It was, fortunately, a case of people couldn't get in for that. And then we disengaged a sensor that was over those doors that, when you went by there, would open the door automatically. So now it's just done as an electronic crash bar. You come in with your swipe, you leave by pushing the crash bar. So that sensor no longer picks up an individual that goes within 10 feet of the door.
Great.
So that MKG door was, that was the one that was really a culprit that just kind of opened on its own. I would be there on a Saturday where I would be there on a Saturday working, and I, it was almost like there was a ghost. Click, click, and the door would open. So, that's been taken care of.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, what I'm going to do is scroll into some photos because this is the really exciting part. So, what I have up here are a side-by-side. I don't know that this is the same exact room, but...
It is, yep.
Is it the same exact room?
Yeah, same, same room, yep.
So, what you can see is there, there were these old, I mean historic chalkboards that would, that would slide down. And then they'd been covered over the years as well. So, that's why you see that hollowed out. And then that's that beadboard on the right. And, you know, you can see how much, just how much cleaner it looks and, you know, more like an office. These are before photos. You can see in terms of, you know, what pulling down the chalkboards exposed, and then the flooring and why flooring did, you know, need to be updated. And then you can see some of the work coming together here in these two photos. Flooring is beautiful. It looks kind of like a brand-new space already.
It's a super durable floor, excuse me, Carolyn, that we, we, two years ago, we put in the MKG cafeteria. And it's not a floating floor. It's actually adhered to the floor below, but it's, it's able to move when there's expansion contraction. And like the cafeteria at MKG used to be a gymnasium. So, that floor moves all year long, and it has the heavy tables on there. And it just wears like iron. It's a no-wax floor, and we've had great luck with it. We put it at central office, and now we're putting it in every space over there. So, typically, you wouldn't put the floor down till the very end. Obviously, these rooms still are going to get beadboard and then painted, and then new light fixtures. But because of the increase in pricing, we were able to put it in. And you'll see on another slide, we're protecting the floors once they go in with what's called a Rhino board. And actually, that room there, we started to cover those floors so that we can now go in that space and do the other work without damaging the floor.
And so, this last photo, you can see some of the, particularly on the right, some of that beadboard. You can see kind of, you know, the improvements around the window. It really does look quite amazing.
Yeah.
And like I said, I can't, I can't say thank you enough to the facilities team. They've truly hit the ground running. Mr. Hutchinson touched on it briefly, but there's an entirely new, reimagined TLC space, which is a specialized program at the Henry B. Berkland School. And it's quite impressive. We'll come back with pictures. I didn't bring pictures tonight. But it's a, it's a new, it's a new space entirely created by, by this team.
We've divided it up to make it into three, three spaces. And it's been painted today. They put the finish coats of paint on there. Now, they'll go in and wax the floors. The timeout room will be completed by the end of the week, tomorrow with Mr. Beach. And then we're just waiting on doors. So, like School Street, the supply chain is really difficult to get a, a date as to when things get delivered. We're still waiting on heaters. We're still waiting on lights for central office, and we ordered them in April. We are actually waiting on lights in this building, believe it or not, that we have not received yet. And equipment that's almost 18 months behind. So, there's, they're hesitant to give you a concrete date as to do a delivery because they don't know. For example, we're now bidding on the boilers here. The last bid came in today. And typically, you would get a 30-to-60-day timeframe on that bid. Now, they go to 20 days because the pricing jumps so quickly. No rhyme or reason to it, but it just does.
So, in some significant progress, the move is anticipated sometime this fall. And I also wanted to just say thank you to Principal Attender. As you recall, that's a lot of the space that is currently being occupied. Principal Attender, along with the other administrators and the people occupying those spaces, have all been wonderfully flexible about, you know, kind of contingency planning. We really are trying to give those spaces back to students right away, which means we're a little doubled up and a little shuffled around, but nothing this team can't handle. And that really, that really sums up this. And actually, that brings me to the completion of my first superintendent's report.
Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent?
Oh. I skipped something.
Then we will move on.
I'm wrong.
Superintendent's report.
I missed one item, of course. It wouldn't be me if I didn't. The item I missed is the induction and mentoring program update. And I'll invite Dr. Teri Markalitis, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, to the table to recap this very exciting three-day program that just wrapped today. And here she is tonight telling you about her experience.
I really thought I was off the hook. Thank you for having me. Good evening, everybody. Yep, we just finished today with induction and mentoring. It has been a very, very busy three days. I'm going to just give you a quick overview of what we, what we provided for the new staff. So, some of the highlights of the mentoring and induction program. We welcomed not 262 new staff members. That's supposed to be 26 to the school community. We have high school teachers and counselors who we welcomed, middle school administrators, teachers and counselors, teachers at MKG and HBB. And at the MEK, we welcomed teachers, a speech pathologist, and an occupational therapist. Something that I think the district should be very proud of is that we have nine new mentors and 17 returning mentors. That is really fantastic. Kate Hetu and Colleen Randall continue to organize and facilitate this program. This is their fourth year. They were amazing. They did such a fantastic job. They matched mentors with mentees. They organized food. They organized activities. They were just wonderful. Day one of Staff Strong was our heaviest day. We really had a lot of information to cover. We had a lot of people who helped out. So, the introduction to our program was delivered by myself, Kate, and Colleen. We then had our Middle Borough Education Association team, Samantha DeShernis and Eva Crawford Presents. Jen Healy did an overview of special education. Jen Healy and I did an overview of policies and procedures. Lunch was provided by the main ingredient, and it was fantastic. Social-emotional learning was touched on by Kevin Albatable. And then Andy DeZell went through the district emergency training. That was day one. It was heavy. Day two, we had some workshops. So, we did some literacy assessments. I did a Q&amp;A session with the high school and middle school teachers. Sean Siciliano came in and did an overview of technology in the district. Sarah Hickey did an overview of budget and staff handbook. I went over our evaluation dates and requirements, something that they're all very interested in when they start. The principals joined us for lunch on the second day, and that was Diavola Catering, who provided that for us. And then in the afternoon, there were more workshops. We had Discovery Ed, some specialized programs that the behavior team introduced. And we had a presentation by the assistant principals on school-wide discipline. Day three, which was today, and our last day, we had various workshops. I did a little bit on classroom management. We went over gradebook and Aspen. Briefly touched on it because until our rosters are up, we really can't dig too deeply into it. But we wanted to give them an opportunity to play around with the systems. Kate Hetu went over IEPs and how to put those into Aspen and how to look them up in Aspen. And then we had a presentation by Kelly Stuckenberg and Kristy Greenwood on data-driven instruction. Lunch was provided by Lorenzo's Restaurant, also delicious. And then teachers were released to work in classrooms with their mentors if they so choose, if they so chose. It has been a very busy day. Here's some pictures of the teachers kind of engaging in the work and with each other. And if you will notice, those beautiful pastries in that third picture, those were delivered to us by Robin Maxwell, who is an ESP at the high school. And not only did they look beautiful, they were delicious. So, those are just some of the pictures. I did have all of our new staff do an exit survey before they left today. I'm not going to go through this, but the feedback was really amazing. And it's a testament to the organization that Kate Hetu and Colleen Randall really put into this effort. Everybody said they learned a lot. They had a lot of fun. It was a lot of sitting. So, some of the recommendations were more body breaks, just like we should do for our students. So, it was really a great three days. I do want to thank Heidi for letting us use the beautiful spaces at the middle school. And I want to thank all of our presenters and mentors. We couldn't have done it without them. And our local restaurants and caterers who kept us well-fed.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So, I had the good fortune to come over and welcome everybody. I was actually the very first presenter of the program. And what I wanted to share was the leadership team came out in full force to support this initiative. So, people who are new to our system met every member of our leadership team. And I think that that's incredibly powerful and shows the commitment of the people who really are what I call the backbone of this school system. So, I wanted to thank the leadership team, and of course, Dr. Markalitis, who's being very gracious, but put a lot of planning into this program as well. Both the dates and the agendas were set months and months in advance. And one of the reasons it was so successful was because it was well-thought-out and organized. It really does reflect who Middle Borough is. So, I wanted to say thank you to you as well.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Chair.
I'm sure you could probably give an entire presentation on the mentoring program, but I wondered if you could just very briefly talk about what it looks like. You know, obviously, you just did at the beginning of the year, but how that mentoring program looks as the year goes on.
Sure. So, we actually have a two-year program. So, the first year for our mentors, their mentor, one mentee, one. And then the next year, it's initiate, one. Means they're kind of ready to be released, but we still want to support them. That's recommended by the state as well. In our first year, we, we have meetings throughout the school year with administrators. They will meet with their mentors weekly, sometimes more than that if they need. Our mentors are available to them for walkthroughs, for observations, to really support them in their buildings, in their content area. It's a very, very well-thought-out structure so that the teachers are very supported. We are working with a book that our staff thought was really great. It is word choice, that's choice words. I'm sorry. It's been a busy day. And so, all of our mentors and all of our new teachers have this book, and it's really about speaking kindly to students and really being careful with your words. And everybody thought it was a great way to kick off the program. And so far, it has been well-received.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, that concludes my report.
Excellent. Next item on our agenda is MSBA report. And just so everyone knows, the two main things that have happened for the MSBA is the superintendent has been appointed to the school building board, and the former superintendent has been appointed as a community member at large, given the amount of time that he had spent there. We are still, the tennis courts and basketball courts were turned over to the schools. We still have punchless items to fix. To be honest, we have a meeting next week. The August meeting was moved down. They were spending a good portion of the summer going over those particular items. And we are still considerably under budget. So, just reminding people of that. Any questions about that?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it, if it fits in that topic. Tell me if it doesn't. But I was just curious how, how the process has been going with access to the field and if there's been any concerns or if it's going well.
No. Hutch has been opening the field each day, and it's open. So, there's opportunities for people to do it. I haven't heard any criticism or any problems.
Awesome.
Hutch?
Yep, just on the field accessibility. It's open every day because school is not in session. So, it's been open for the whole summer. I don't unlock and lock it only during the school year. So, it's open every day. Tennis courts and basketball courts as well.
Great. Thank you.
I would say the only negative thing I've heard, Rich, is it may take someone once or twice to figure out how to get in. That has been the problem. And we've tried to explain to them how to get in, and so we've gone from there.
Got it.
I would remind people, again, the rules of the fields because we are about to go into session. The fields are not available when school is session. And that's primarily for the safety of our kids.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions about MSBA? Next item on the agenda is just a reminder that the MAS-C, MAS-S Annual Conference is numbered second through fifth. If people are still interested, let us know. Chan Weyentertain a motion to approve the consent agendas.
So, move.
Do I have a second? Discussion? Only thing is, it's all, it's a list of, essentially, a list of fundraisers and a welcome-back party in addition to the warrants. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We took care of the action items. We put a list of new hires, as the superintendent talked about. I would also bring your attention to the donations. While we brought muckies here today, we did receive, their ocean spray is going to adopt a classroom.
It's a building.
And also, I do want to mention, it came kind of late. And I did have a conversation with the, the principal that the Pierce trustees donated to the welcome-back rally speaker. They donated about $4,000 from the Pierce trustees, so we appreciate that. And any other questions? So, this is our last summer meeting. So, we go back to the first and third Thursdays of the month, and we're on our regular schedule. And with that, the Chan Weyentertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll see you the first Thursday in September. And thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. You survived your first.